Mission this Thursday, April 19th, 2018. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Stretzenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Taparo?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Commissioner Elder?
Here.
Commissioner Glad?
Here.
Chair Ung? Here. Is this working? No? Testing. Testing. Testing?
They're also on.
Okay. I'll just speak.
Yeah, we said.
Commissioner Stretzenberg, would you please lead us?
Please rise. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is the mic issues? Nothing. Okay, well, good evening and welcome everyone. Sure, you're here for a particular agenda item, but before we get to that, we're going to take care of a few administrative items here. The approval of the agenda, there's a recommendation to consider item nine prior to the consent calendar.
And Mr. Chair, the city manager is unable to be with us this evening, therefore I recommend you remove item nine from the calendar.
Okay, overruled.
So we need a motion to remove it?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to remove that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, so ordered. Consent calendar, these are routine business items, except for that, that's already been noticed for a public hearing. The commission members may request that any of the consent calendar items be removed, discussed, or acted upon separately, and any of those items removed from the consent calendar will be taken up immediately following the approval of the remaining consent calendar items. Any comments regarding the consent calendar? None? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve all consent calendar items.
Second?
Second.
Motion and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, so ordered. This time, you know, prior to us having our public hearing, let me just kind of have a show of hands, how many here plan on providing some sort of testimony during that? Okay, for those that intend to, would you please stand where, and we'll have an audience oath? Okay. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ex parte communications in this section is intended to allow all the officials here the opportunity to reveal any disclosure or ex parte communications about the public hearing that we're about to have. Any?
Yes, I had a meeting with, as my French can say, president of the Friends of Redondo Beach Arts with two representatives from Forest City, it was Kenley and Ryan Malloy, solely for the public art and art in Redondo Beach.
Thank you.
I had some conversations with some residents.
I've had conversations with just about everyone since it's in my area, over a mile away, but I've spoken with the applicant, the representatives, Kenneth Lee, Jeff Mailman, Amanda Glover, and I forget her name, but the GM of Macy's a couple of years ago, Districts Four and Five Council members, Councilmember Grant and Laura Emde, I would tell also attended their meetings for their district, Commissioner Stretzenberg, I've spoken with residents of Redondo, Torrance, and Landale, North Redondo Beach Business Association, I was at that and spoke with Heidi Patzine as well, the Redondo Beach Neighbors for about Artisia Boulevard, it's an online group, I've spoken with Rosellis, Jim Light, Sheila Lamb, Doug Boswell, Nancy Hunt, Louise Marie, Bob Pinsler, Holly Osborne, I've also spoken with some of the members of Residents Against Gallery Expansion, Suzie Royds, Next Door, at the South Bay City Councils of Government, SBC COG, I spoke with Larry Cosment, I've spoken with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Redondo Beach Unified School District, I've spoken with Janet Rodella, Anita Avric, Brad Waller, and on the Measure Q Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I've spoken with Raymer Flynn, and I'd also think staff, I've met with staff multiple times, and they've answered a lot of questions, made me very helpful, thank you.
I spoke with various residents and City Councilman John Grant.
Lastly, I spoke into residents and along with them, a team member from the applicant.
All right, thank you. Okay. We will now discuss, have a public hearing for consideration to certify and adopt a final environmental impact report, findings, statement of overriding considerations, a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, including potential modifications to the proposed mitigation measures, and to consider an application for Planning Commission Design Review, conditional use permit, variance, investing tentative track map number 74481 for the South Bay Galleria Improvement Project. The applicant and property owner is South Bay Center SPE LLC, located at 1815 Hawthorne Boulevard, case number 2018-04-PC-003. I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
At the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. First, a little bit of housekeeping tonight, I'd call your attention to four blue folder items that you already received and filed, under item seven on your agenda, a letter from Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo, would be, we have a letter from Gideon Krakoff Law Firm Attorneys, we have a short, one-page summary and explanation of the mixed-use development, traffic, and trip generation model, and Attachment C is the final errata to staff report and all of the items before you this evening. So with that, I'd like to just give a brief introduction, and then I'll turn it over to Stacy and the applicant to make presentations. Tonight, you're going to be considering one of the city's most important projects, South Bay Galleria Revitalization is truly a transformative project for the community, and it offers some new innovative solutions to repurpose a regional mall, retail sales mall, into what could be, and we hope will be, a new hub of our community. The project is sustainable, and offers us some very resource-efficient, low-impact development per square foot, and also provides us with some state-of-the-art community improvements and investments. Project is critical to our community's well-being and our vitality, you'll see some innovative health and vitality aspects to the project. Several years of planning, listening, and project revision are being brought forward to you tonight. There's a really good story to tell here. Unlike most developers, the applicants have excelled in not only listening to the community, but they've responded to the community in many ways to change and improve this project. We're very pleased that the applicant understands our community needs, wants, and desires. The project before you tonight meets those needs and accomplishes many of those objectives. You know, each and every project has been analyzed and received expert analysis, the potential impacts have been quantified and understood, and where feasible, they are mitigated. While any project of this nature is sure to raise questions, we believe that the public process has been thorough and responsive in addressing the issues raised. In light of all these considerations, it is our pleasure to present the South Bay Galleria Revitalization Project to you tonight, and we will be recommending approval, so now I'll turn it over to Stacy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. The project site is located at the northeastern corner of the city, it's bounded by Hawthorne and Artisia Boulevards to the east and the north, Kingsdale is to the west of the site, and 177th Street is to the south. The site is approximately 30 acres in size and roughly square in shape. This is the only portion of the city that is zoned regional commercial. To the north is the city of Landale, and to the east is the city of Torrance. The existing three-story enclosed mall is approximately 971,000 square feet. There are three department store spaces, a surface parking lot, a rear parking structure, a basement, and a bus turnout. There's a total of 4,041 existing parking spaces. The site was originally developed in 1957 with a one-story strip mall. By 1970, there was a multi-story commercial building on the site, and by 1985, the current mall was constructed. In 1997, a theater was added above the rear parking structure. There was a retail replacement project recently at the South Bay Marketplace that was completed in 2010, I'd like to note that that is currently under separate ownership. The project proposes an increase in shops, dining, and entertainment of approximately 217,000 square feet. There will be a new 150-room boutique hotel and a new 300-using residential rental building. There will be up to 50,000 square feet of commercial office space in place of retail. The project proposes a total of just under 1.6 million square feet. It also incorporates 5.7 acres of public open space, and will provide a total of 5,662 parking spaces. There are nine vehicular entry points to the site, the main entry is off of Hawthorne Boulevard, the yellow building is our residential building, and there are two secured entry points into this structure. The purple building is the hotel, and this is the only portion of the site that has a one-way entrance off of Artisia Boulevard, and here you can see a small parking lot, as well as access to the subterranean garage. Parking will be primarily within the subterranean garage or to the rear parking structures. As you can see, there are only a couple of short roadways within the site, thus the focus is primarily on pedestrian and bicycle access. There will be two bike valet stations, one at the rear of the residential structure, and one at the rear of the enclosed mall. Per the municipal code, public open space is defined as spaces that are at least 10 feet in width, are fully accessible to the public, and are contiguous to the extent feasible. There will be a community open space just off of the main entry, a walk-street open space, a neighborhood open space adjacent to the residential structure, and then various multimodal green belts throughout the site. Here in the center with the main open spaces, you'll see public art, programmed events, as well as children's play areas. There will be a two-tier subterranean garage with over 1,900 parking spaces, there will also be a new tier, two-tier structure above ground off of Kingsdale and 177th, and that will have over 500 spaces. The existing parking structure will be increased in height to accommodate an additional 444 spaces, and below the residential in a basement area, there will be 604 spaces. Lastly, there will be 47 surface parking spaces. Because this is a multi-use site, there was a shared parking analysis prepared by our consultant, Fair and Pierce, and that's included as Attachment H with your staff report, both Alternative Four and Four-One were analyzed. The project includes six public art locations, there will be one prominent public art piece at the main entry, three within the open space areas, and then two wall pieces along the edges of the site. Here's a snapshot of some of the conceptual art proposed, this is the main public art piece coming into the site, and here you can see an interactive piece in the community park. The architectural design is high-quality contemporary, you can see a mix of cool and warm materials, there are geometric as well as curved shapes throughout the buildings, and with glass elements, there will be indoor and outdoor connectivity, there are varying heights and facade projections to also add visual interest throughout the site. Of course, this will provide a sense of place within the site, as well as be complementary to the South Bay Marketplace and sensitive to surrounding land uses. This is of course a transit priority area, this is close proximity to the transit center, to also the 405 freeway, and potentially the green line extension in the future. As a mixed-use site, we will see reduced vehicle mile traveled, this results in reduced greenhouse gas and air quality emissions, this is consistent with state goals outlined in SB 375 for infill development to be located in transit-accessible areas. The project also incorporates climate-appropriate drought-tolerant landscaping, provides bicycle access, bike valets, and pedestrian access, and overall is energy-efficient in both design and materials. There are land use policies within the general plan that are specific to regional commercial, and these include the continued use of the Galleria site as a regional serving center, integrating both residential and commercial uses, also the increase of development to enhance economic vitality, contribute revenue to the city, and improve pedestrian-oriented activity. A mix of uses is also listed, including retail, commercial, restaurants, and professional offices. The general plan also calls out vertical mixed use with commercial on the base level and residential built above. It states high-quality design, public transit facilities, and streetscape improvements, which are all incorporated into the project. This is a snapshot of the regional commercial zoning development standards. For mixed use, the floor area ratio is 1.5, the total FAR for the project before you tonight is approximately 1.23, it's just under 1.0 for the commercial component, and .23 for the residential component. There's a 60-foot building height limit and four stories, oddly enough, the general plan allows for up to 100 feet for this regional commercial site. Setbacks vary from 4 feet to 40 feet, and they're subject to Planning Commission Design Review. Private outdoor living space will be provided for each residential unit, and that's 200 square feet. Public open space is required to be 10% of the FAR, and the project provides well beyond that, and as we stated, the shared parking analysis shows, the site is adequate for the mix of uses proposed. The entitlements requested include conditional use permit, a Planning Commission Design Review, a variance application, a vesting tentative track map, and EIR certification. The conditional use permit review process is to ensure uses with unique characteristics do not adversely affect surrounding properties. The criteria include that the site conformed to the general plan, is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the use, has adequate access for the expected traffic, and there are no adverse effects to abiding properties. This is detailed further within the staff report on page 18. Planning Commission Design Review ensures compatibility, innovation in design, and landscaping to protect surrounding properties and neighborhoods. Criteria include user impact and needs, relationship to physical features, consistency of architectural style, balance and integration with the neighborhood, building designs, and signage. This is discussed at great length in the EIR, and it's also noted within the staff report on pages 19 and 20. The variance application is required for relief from both the height and the number of stories. Criteria for approval of variances include special circumstances for that site, and it must be consistent with the general plan. The hotel and residential buildings meet the code maximum height of 60 feet, however, they propose six stories instead of the allowed four. The existing parking structure will be increased to 67 feet in height, this succeeds code maximum, but meets the general plan policy allowing up to 100 feet. This increase is consistent with the prior variance granted for the theater piece. The site is indeed unique in size, shape, and zoning, and because the hotel and residential footprints are smaller with additional layers in between, we can maximize the public open space, and of course, providing additional parking for mixed-use site of this size is There are four existing parcels, the track map prepared by Den Engineers proposes 59 lots, each lot will have direct access to public streets or have recorded access agreements. This is really a financing tool, and this is for future leasing and financing agreements. Even though QIC plans to maintain ownership long-term of the site, this will allow multiple entities to have investment in the long-term vitality of the site. An environmental impact report was prepared by our consultant, Environment Science Associate, excuse me, it analyzed the proposed project, it's over 1.9 million square feet total, with 650 residential units, and a 150-room hotel. Per the California Environmental Quality Act, several alternatives were analyzed, including Alternative One, the no-project alternative, and then various reductions, including Two, Three, Four, and Four-Dash-One. The entitlement applications, of course, were submitted for Alternative Four and Four-Dash-One, this was fully analyzed and circulated as part of the draft EIR. 14 resource areas were analyzed within the EIR, nine were determined to be less than significant, there were four resource areas that had significant impacts that could be mitigated, avoided, or substantially lessened. These included biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise. Transportation and traffic showed to have significant and unavoidable impacts, there were five significant intersection impacts, two of which could be mitigated to less than significant, while three intersections, however, remained significant and unavoidable. I would like to note that the proposed project had six impacted intersections, so with Alternative Four, we have one less. These are the five intersections that were impacted. You can see that there are mitigation measures proposed for number 13 and 18, there is a mitigation measure proposed for intersection 17, however, it only improves the intersection and does not fully mitigate that intersection. This is intersection 13, it's Inglewood Avenue and Artisia Boulevard. Within this yellow circle here, you can see that this is currently a dedicated right turn, and this mitigation measure will make it a shared right and through lane. With intersection 18, within this yellow circle, this is currently a shared lane, and now it will be a dedicated right turn, thus, there will be two dedicated right-turn lanes entering into the 405 southbound ramp from Artisia Boulevard. This will also require signage to be revised upstream of the intersection. Notice of Preparation Initial Study was released October 1st of 2015, the city hosted a scoping meeting at the Galleria site on October 10th in 2015, the draft EIR was published July 28th, 2017, and the city hosted a workshop August 26th of 2017, and finally, the final EIR was published February 1st of this year. The applicant has held or attended more than 75 meetings. Attachment G to the staff report gives a full outreach summary. From these discussions, Alternative Four and Four-One were developed, the reduction of residential units to 300 units was created, the relocation of residential from Kingsdale to Hawthorne Boulevard, there's also office space that was added as part of the project, and lastly, open space was increased. And lastly, open space was increased with landscaping and site amenities. As you are aware, the applicant requested postponement of this hearing twice so they could work further with concerned groups. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review and consider the final EIR. Open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, deliberate on the project, and adopt the draft resolutions certifying the final EIR, approving the water supply assessment, environmental findings, statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, as well as granting the request for a conditional use permit, a Planning Commission Design Review, a variance, and approving a vesting tentative track map. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, now the applicant has a presentation for you this evening.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, good evening. My name is Ken Lee. I came before the Planning Commission in 2009, and on behalf of Forest City, requested approval for the South Bay Marketplace. Together, we had an opportunity to transform a blighted area of this very important economic district into a vibrant and thriving retail center. Today, Total Wine, Sprouts, and North Stream Rack anchor a very, very successful center, a center that not only serves the local community but also the surrounding cities, and a center that contributes vital sales tax revenue to the city of Redondo Beach. Since the opening of the marketplace in 2010, I have been working on the repositioning of the South Bay Galleria. An indoor mall that was opened in 1984-85, that was the talk of the town then. There was a lot of newspaper about it. It was a great, great project. Today, tonight, together, we have the opportunity to make it the talk of the town again. In 2013, Forest City brought on QIC as an investment partner on several assets, including the South Bay Galleria. Recently, this property was part of a larger transaction where QIC went from an investment partner to being a sole ownership. QIC, with their experience as an owner, developer, and operator of major retail properties, was intimately involved over the last five years in the planning of this project. And as a sole ownership, as a sole owner of this property now, they bring with them a long-term investment strategy as well as local hands-on management experience. So in the continuing revitalization of this very important commercial zone, I'm very proud to introduce to you tonight a plan that we think will transform this property and also give Redondo Beach the gateway that it deserves. The plan is a culmination, as you've heard from staff, of years of planning as well as extensive community engagement. But before we begin, I would like to acknowledge the impressive efforts of your city staff, especially in particular Erin Jones and Stacy Cancela. Your dedication to your profession and community is unwavering and ensures the community the highest degree of quality of materials and design in the finished product for this project. It's been a pleasure working with both of you, and thank you again. With me tonight, John Alderson, QIC's Head of Development for the U.S., Jeff Mailman, who heads up our outreach efforts, Anne Marie Britnall, partner of the global architecture, planning, and design firm Gensler, and the rest of our development team. We're here to answer any questions you may have. So, and now I would like to introduce John Alderson, a native son of Redondo Beach, born and raised only a mile from here, John.
Thanks, Ken. Good evening. It's nice to be here with you this evening, and it's really nice to be home, I have to tell you that. I went to grade school right across the street, by the way, and I'd ride my skateboard there for the first 12 years of my life. Tonight, I'd like to tell you a little bit about QIC and how we approach our retail and community environments. We're going to share with you in detail the conceptual plans that we have for the Galleria and how they reflect the input of our, from our community. These plans reveal a transformation of quality that places our community at the focal point. In order for us to transition from being an organization that builds and manages shopping centers to one that creates living ecosystems, we need to be aware of the shift from shopper to citizen. We need to be aware of this transition from shopper to citizen in the architecture and how, and how the experience evolves and how it's promoted. In the past, the common focus was just on the creation of great buildings, and while that's still important, it's the understanding of the people that sets us apart. We must nurture this community environment to create the experiences that we all value. So who is QIC? QIC is the investment arm for the state government employees of Queensland, Australia. With nearly 30 years of investment experience and over $65 billion of assets under management, we take a long-range view of our holdings and how we transform them. We've been financially active in the United States for the past five years as a partner with Forest City, and recently acquired 12 significant assets nationwide, becoming the owner of South Bay Galleria after five years of collaboration. Our offices are right here in the South Bay. Our specialty is in repositioning real estate to withstand the test of time by aligning with the values of our community. We're often asked, why retail? Isn't retail dead? Retail that stands alone is in a very sensitive place today. We contend that retail is not dead, but poorly curated retail is very vulnerable. People yearn for experience. We want to socialize. We appreciate great food in outdoor environments that celebrate our beautiful climate. We value environmentally sensitive approaches that reduce our impact on the world. We want to be safe. We want our kids to be safe, and we want to be proud. In a fast-moving environment where the only constant is change, the power of this reframing gives new context and meaning to what exists today. We've applied this in our thinking and in our strategy. It is no longer just a mall. It is our strategy to create dynamic places that add value to the community. Not long ago, shopping malls simply included major department stores, discount stores, and apparel. That model does not work anymore. In fact, those places have become the stigma of dying retail. They've become rundown, have even closed, or become a hotbed for crime. Our outlook is if you simply restore what's there, the same result is inevitable. The evolution of these places now takes on more responsibility and must align with the values of the community and the people who live in it. Dynamic community spaces include fresh food, dining, office and co-working, health and well-being, great public open spaces, thoughtful landscaping, connectivity for bikers and walkers, integration of public safety, and even housing, hotels, libraries, and venues for the arts. Today, how we build and how we operate must also be more environmentally sensitive. Sustainability is something we cannot breeze over lightly. Our dense population strains our natural resources. As responsible stewards of our land, QIC is overt with our commitment. We are a signatory of the United Nations-backed Principles for Responsible Investment Initiative. This is a voluntary initiative that holds ourselves accountable by publicly reporting our environmental, social, and governance initiatives. We have dedicated in-house specialists that guide our substantial environmental and social programs. We strive to lessen our footprint with our drought-tolerant planting, our solar applications, and green space to reduce the heat. We pay attention to access, circulation, shade, and recycled building materials. And our responsibility extends beyond the architecture. Socially, we need to look out for one another. We're proud to develop a women's refuge, donated significant funds to local charities, provided training and apprenticeship access on behalf of local businesses, showcased local artists, and implemented community gardens. Environmental and social responsibility is part of our DNA. So as you begin to see, it's not just a mall anymore. That's not good enough. We're building communities. We're inspired by our community, and we want to reflect their collective values. We are humbled by the opportunity of a clean expression, a reflection, a transformation. The South Bay Gallery, as it stands today, does not reflect us as a community. It's not good enough. It needs a little love. Our plans have been made better by our neighbors. We've been blessed with an active community that shares in the desire for change. I'd like to introduce to you one of our key project members, Jeff Mailman, who will walk us through the background of this community engagement and share those areas where the community has made this a better place. Jeff?
Thank you, John, and good evening to the commission. As a proud Redondo Beach resident, I'm happy to stand here before you and share with you the extensive outreach that has gone into the Galleria project before you tonight and how the feedback that we've received throughout the process has changed the project for the better. Our outreach began in early 2015 with a series of community meetings and focus groups. These were designed to solicit feedback from the community about what they wanted to see, what their vision was for the future of the Galleria. We heard that people wanted more restaurants, that they liked the idea of an outdoor shopping environment, and that they wanted a safe, family-oriented spot in North Redondo that was a true gathering place to meet people, to connect, and to spend time. We brought those ideas to our architects and our design team and put them to work. In early 2016, we came back to the community with three designs for the project that we shared in what we called sneak peeks, is the opportunity for everybody to take a look at something that actually had site plans and renderings associated with, something that was tangible that they could look at. We spoke to people from all over the city and got plenty of feedback. There were many positive comments, and of course, many things that the community wanted us to change. But instead of simply pushing forward with one of these three alternatives, we went back to the drawing board. We came up with a refined plan. That's the Plan Four-Dash-One that's in front of you this evening. And I'd like to point out some of the key differences in that project that's the direct result of the feedback that we got from the community. So our immediate neighbors on Kingsdale asked that the residential units be moved to the other side of the project along the Hawthorne side, and that we do something to lower the building heights facing Kingsdale. We listened. Alternative Four-Dash-One moves the residential to a new location on the Hawthorne side of the project, and that enabled us to reduce building heights from about 60 feet on the Kingsdale frontage down to about 23 and 1/2 feet. We were also able to significantly reduce the height of the hotel. Many people asked us to improve safety and the perception of safety at the existing center, and we listened. We spent a lot of time with the Redondo Beach Police Department and with Chief Kaufman to actively create a comprehensive plan that addresses public concerns, uses new technology, and improves onsite facilities so that we can deliver the type of dynamic community space where everyone can feel safe. Members of the South Bay Bicycle Coalition asked for better bike connections and amenities, so we added a new bike corral and bike valet service. We also created new off-street bike lanes in our linear green belt, both along 177th Street and along Kingsdale, and designed the project to more effectively interact with the existing South Bay Bicycle Master Plan. Folks from Beach Cities Health District asked us to pay more attention to creating a more walkable community with more open space. So Alternative Four-Dash-One now includes a more extensive pedestrian pathway system that includes wider paths, more landscaping, and the opportunity for additional amenities in that space. We've also added a large new open space we call Neighborhood Park, bringing our open space total to more than seven acres. Many in the community asked us to consider the addition of office space at the site, and that's the reason the plan before you includes 50,000 square feet of potential new office space. The Redondo Beach Unified School District asked us to right-size the residential component so we didn't adversely impact our schools, and so we collaborated with them. We funded a study that was done by the district's own consultant to analyze student generation numbers, and then reduced the number of our proposed residential units to well below what the school district said it could accommodate. We continue to have meetings with the community before, during, and even after the public comment period, listening to feedback and finding new ways to make the project even better. In all, we held more than 75 community meetings, some large, some small. We met at the Galleria, out in the community, and even in people's living rooms. We presented to the district meetings of all five city council members and solicited feedback from every corner of the city. More importantly, we have woven those comments into a final product that is not just ours but reflects feedback from the entire community. Now I'd like to introduce Anne Marie Britnall, partner of the global architecture and design firm Gensler. Founded in 1965, the firm serves more than 3,500 active clients in virtually every industry. Gensler designers strive to make the places people live, work, and play more inspiring, more resilient, and more impactful. Anne Marie will talk to our shared vision for the revitalization in the future of the South Bay Galleria. Anne Marie?
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. As a resident of the South Bay and a firm-wide practice area leader for the repositioning of retail centers, it is my pleasure to be here tonight to share with you our vision of the South Bay gallery transformation and your new Redondo Beach experience. Place might be the outcome, but it's the people that create the community. As John mentioned earlier, our mission is to design vibrant spaces where people want to engage and feel a sense of community. To gain a perspective, Gensler conducted a multi-year research effort to identify and quantify the factors that design that impacts the human experience. We surveyed more than 4,000 people across the U.S. to gain a deeper understanding of why people go where they do, how design impacts their behavior, and how to design spaces to deliver great experiences. One of the reasons I am excited to work on this project is because the principles we discovered at Gensler match up perfectly with QIC. With this education, I would like to introduce you to the New South Bay. This is the existing traditional center. It's tired and closed mall, which is anchored by large-scale department stores, surrounded by a sea of parking and disconnected from the surrounding community. The current configuration is not relevant in today's world. People today desire places that are designed with the community in mind, a seamlessly-connected program designed around community spaces, a place to live, work, and play, a city within a city, a place where people shop, dine, stay, work, and meet, where meaningful connections are formed. The New South Bay will continue to evolve into a vibrant micro-city within Redondo Beach. It's all about a sense of pride, community, and place. The new plan is iconic, it's innovative, and transformative. It's a catalyst for improving Artesia Boulevard. It seamlessly connected indoor and outdoor shopping, where you can dine at one of the unique chef-driven offerings with outdoor terraces. You can stay at the 150-room boutique hotel. You can live or visit friends in one of the 300 modern apartment homes. You can work in a creative office environment that incorporates sustainable design and community benefits. A few of the community benefits include a multimillion-dollar public art program located within the community spaces, as highlighted on the plan, and a bike path that is a continuation of the Redondo Beach Bike Master Plan. Our plan would continue the bike route from Grant and Kingsdale onto the property and add bike valet stations. The master plan would draw from the adjacent property and continue the pedestrian access into the property. Next, I would like to walk you through the many community open spaces we have designed at the New South Bay. This is the entry gateway. This view takes us through the entry gateway from Hawthorne Boulevard, passing the residential to the south. Visitors will arrive at this grand entry to experience a unique, one-of-a-kind community that integrates retail, entertainment, dining, and residential uses. From the entry gateway, visitors can access below-grade parking, Uber-Lift drop-off areas, and a spectacular Uber Lyft drop-off areas, and a spectacular community park. This takes us to the community park. This view is coming into the community park with a hotel to the north. Once in the community park, visitors will experience a family-oriented open space filled with lush, mature landscaping, water features, and public art, surrounded by active dining patios and balconies. Flexible space will be programmed to allow everything from art walks and pop-up chef demonstrations to a performance stage and movies in the park. Here is a scale comparison of the Point and El Segundo. The open space at the Point fits within our community park. Another example is the Metlocks Open Space in Manhattan Beach. This also fits within our community park. This next view keeps us in the community park but looks back towards the Walk Street and the residential to the southeast. Central to the entire project, the community park provides one-of-a-kind experiences seamlessly merging retail, dining, hotel, and residential uses. With interactive pop jets for children, signature public art, and public open space, the community park will become the area's go-to spot for people watching, outdoor dining, and enjoying the incredible Redondo Beach weather. This brings us to the pedestrian paseo. Serving as a link between the indoor shops, the community park, and the neighborhood park, the pedestrian paseo provides a comfortable and sheltered space for visitors to traverse different areas of the project. The scale the space provides for a comfortable shade at resting spot. The hardscape and landscape changes hint at the transition to the project's neighborhood park. This is the neighborhood park. We are now standing in the neighborhood park with the homes to the right looking towards the hotel. Walking through the paseo, visitors at the neighborhood park will encounter a special interaction between the residential and retail. Ground-level retail uses open to the park, and elevator residential gathering spaces and balconies overlook both retailers and family-friendly children's activity areas. Providing different amenities sure to be popular to both the residents and the visitors, the neighborhood park is home to the project's bike valet and bike corral, as well as cafe patios, rich landscaping, living walls, and multiple family-friendly experiences for children. As a scale comparison, this open space is the size of all the single-family homes along Kingsdale, over 400 feet in length. This is the Kingsdale Linear Green Belt. This view is looking north on Kingsdale with the linear green belt to the east. This 30-foot-wide green belt pays special attention to the interaction with the existing homes. The Kingsdale Linear Green Belt wraps the entire Kingsdale and 177th Street frontages with layers of large trees and lush landscaping. The reduced-height building is set back from the street far enough to also incorporate an offset two-way protected bike path and a footpath that allows for safe and comfortable access for both pedestrians and cyclists, including those who will be coming from the city's new transit center and eventually the Green Line station. Iconic, innovative, and transformative. Welcome to your New South Bay.
Thank you, Anne Marie. So as you can see, this is a much different experience. It deserves a new name, a complete rebranding that will serve as a gateway to our city and reflect our pride. This opportunity is real. The significant physical, social, and financial benefits from this privilege for our community are real. This opportunity has the substantial backing of a long-term investor, proven performer, and community partner focused on creating a sense of community, a sense of place, a dynamic environment for all in Redondo Beach. At QIC, we're committed to reimagining places where people choose to feel and be proud to belong. We look forward to answering any questions that may come up this evening. We appreciate your time, and ultimately, we respectfully are seeking the approval of our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up just to the commissioners if they have any questions for the applicant. Commissioner Glad?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, specifically having to do with some of the parking. So there was mention of underground Lyft, Uber drop-offs, considering the fact that, I guess I'm trying to get a better understanding of where that is. I mean, a lot of people are traveling using Uber and Lyft, especially some of the younger generations. So I can see that this could be something that gets obviously bigger and bigger as time goes on. So what's the anticipated plan for that?
Certainly. And safety is where we start because the ability for cars to pull off of the major thoroughfares like Artesia and Hawthorne and get into the property quickly without backing up traffic is first for the safety of the drivers and for the safety of the people and the flow of traffic going through. Second of all, the safety of the rider is also important. So a dedicated pull-out area on our property is the most efficient way to do it. If you remember the one image that showed the statue, if you will, of the people out front, the sort of the iconic art piece off of Hawthorne Boulevard. What was difficult to depict in a rendering or any one two-dimensional picture is that pull-off area. But if you were to drive into the property from Hawthorne Boulevard and pull to the right or pull around through a circular port de coucher, you can, there's plenty of room for not only Uber and Lyft, but for valet if it's important.
And then in terms of employee parking, I'm curious whether the plan is to try to do things to encourage employees to take transit, such as providing transit passes, encouraging that kind of thing for employees?
Certainly. In our transit and demand program, where we have, not only do we encourage employees to be onsite for their own safety, but with the proposed extension of the Green Line, we're very excited to see where that lands. We understand that that is an entirely different project, but we are ready to accept that wherever they may choose, and it seems to surround our property, and we're excited to do that.
I guess I should back up a little bit, too. And I should just say, I gotta say, I'm very impressed with the project. You guys have done what I think is a phenomenal job of soliciting community feedback and really responding to the community. And I was pleased to see that and how the design has changed and the scope of the project, in particular, the hotel, the residential component of it have really changed, and the amount of green space as well. One of the sort of questions slash comments I have with regard to the green space, I actually have a young child, and I will tell you, I go to the Point all the time, and I go to the Metlock Center. And one thing that I particularly like and some of my fellow moms like is, you know, being able to sit at a restaurant and actually have someplace where you can see your child. So I know you said that there's the play area, and then it looks like in the community park there's some sort of a structure that a child's walking on. But I thought that in the description, you guys described it as public art. I don't know if you've spent any time at the Point, but the little lifeguard shack that they have there that you can see that the kids climb all over is, to be honest, it's a godsend to have that there so you can sit at a restaurant and actually see your kid while you're eating, and they're running over there burning some energy off. So is that actually intended to be a public art structure? Or is it intended to be a play structure or what?
It was intended to evoke the thought that you had. So first of all, thank you for your compliment, and we're proud of the work. And we thought that the delays were meaningful so that we can continue to do a little bit of outreach this year. That whole central park area is such an important part of the project because not only does it tie in, in a very safe way, needs that we have in Redondo Beach, but it also allows us to exploit our fantastic climate by having patios that front that with restaurant uses. And if you look at the way that retail is structured today, it's not just fashion and shopping anymore, it's experience. And that experience includes being able to sit on that patio with a great green space out in front. And if it's watching your child, it's watching your child. If it's just people watching, that's fantastic as well. Nonetheless, you're doing it outside, and that's how we like to live here. And so that's intended to facilitate that activity there. That interactive art piece, quite honestly, I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but I guarantee it's going to be interactive, and I guarantee it's going to be significant, and it goes to add to the flavor of that open park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Elder?
Sorry, I also would like to thank you again for all of the community outreach. Everyone I've spoken to has said that they've been able to, you've been accessible, you've listened to feedback, particularly with the school district. They said you're the only developer that's ever actually tried to work with them on a project like this to minimize the impacts and find ways to mitigate them. So that's something very important. I also have young children in the school, so certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
I come with a slew of questions, but I'll save some of them for later. But one of the ones I had up front was, for the residential component, is it your intention to limit the number of occupants to two per bedroom or some formula they're in? Or do you plan on having restrictions on that?
We have a, the market drives a lot of that, right? So people would say, gosh, you should do it all three bedrooms, or you should do it all studios. And it doesn't quite work that way. The focus is on studios, one bedroom and two bedrooms. There aren't any, there aren't a significant amount of three bedrooms in the plan because we look at it as an entry way into, first of all, keeping our young folks in Redondo Beach, I think, is important to all of us. And then giving them an affordable way to enter into the workforce while staying close to home is also important. That is the intent of the residential.
Sure, yeah. The reason I was asking is because for an owned property, that's very difficult to limit the household size and determine, define what a family is. For an apartment, it seems like you'd have more control over that so you wouldn't have, you know, just to be outrageous, five families sharing one unit.
Oh, certainly, yeah, yeah. So in the house rules, if you will, of the apartment, certainly that will be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have just one question. How many mixed-use projects have you done with residential and commercial combined?
Oh, boy, as QIC, I'd have to defer that and get a little bit of assistance. It's several. Personally, I've done nearly two dozen.
Okay. And how successful have they been?
One's still under construction in La Jolla in San Diego. The other 13 were in Hawaii, and they were very successful. I've done some residential adjacent to open space and activated community space, extremely successful. And I think that it speaks to what we perceive the market demand to be, which is live, work, play, all while being safe and all while enjoying the climate.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You mentioned the, I think your architect mentioned the inclusion of the green living walls. Have you considered any green roofs for this facility?
We haven't gotten that far down on the design yet, but certainly the reducing the heat sink for the roofs is very, very important to us. And if there are visible roof surfaces, certainly nobody wants to look down on something that isn't treated in some artistic way.
Okay. I think you in particular mentioned sustainability earlier, that you don't take that lightly. That's an important aspect for you. Interesting that just recently, and we had it before us this evening in our package, that the city council and the staff all got together with public engagement and went through a sustainability review for the city and listed opportunities and a threats assessment. And one of the opportunities was listed as revitalization of commercial areas. In particular, the Galleria was listed, along with Artesia and the waterfront. They also listed several threats. And one of those was traffic and added population density. Population density is the only one that was listed twice as a threat. So apparently, it's a double threat. Now, this was just recently unanimously adopted by the city council. So unfortunately, you do offer a couple of things that have been listed by the city council as threats to the city and sustainability of the city. If you have a response to that, I'm certain to hear it. I just wanted to bring that up to mainly the commissioners and the public and everyone here.
No, I find it to be an interesting study, and I think it's one that's worthwhile and undertaking. And I'm, you know, happy to be involved in a city that would do something like that, first of all. Second of all, I think an additional threat, and perhaps it's addressed in the report or not, I haven't seen the report, but an additional threat is the urban decay of aged shopping centers that if they're not allowed to be revitalized, will only go in one direction, and it's not up, it's down. And so a thoughtful redesign of an existing asset that's over 30 years old in a format that doesn't work anymore is also a threat that I would probably recognize in a report like that.
Yeah, so essentially, a lack of an opportunity can become a threat.
Sure, doing nothing is a threat.
It's been mentioned that having large trees here, and all the pictures show large trees. What's your intention there? Are you going to plant fully mature trees? Are you going to have a growth period?
I promise you, we will not be planting sticks.
The big range between a stick and a mature tree?
Indeed, indeed. So I think that part of the artistic expression in landscaping is done with mature trees. I personally have worked with Calvin Abe, who has prepared the landscape design for you in the package on behalf of staff. And Calvin will attest that he and I have gone round and round in making sure that we buy landscaping early, that it's climatized in time, and it's mature.
Is Macy's going away?
No, we don't have any plans for Macy's to go away.
What part of the, are they going to be included in? What part of the new layout?
Oh, we're, I'm sorry, we're actively working with Macy's for relocation of their building. And that's, that is necessary for us to create the amount of open space that we provided.
Are dogs allowed? Are you going to encourage dogs? And all your pictures show a lot of dogs running around.
Absolutely. I'm not sure that...
But welcome to South Bay where we have a big issue with dogs on public areas and lots of commentary on that.
On the leash, though, right? I'm sure. Yes, absolutely, on a leash.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a very current hot topic in the whole South Bay, including Redondo Beach, especially in public areas like the Strand where people walk their dogs and the difficulties with cleaning that up.
It is a cleanliness issue, and there's also a safety issue that we're aware of.
Dog friendly?
Yes.
Leashed?
Leashed.
Dog friendly, yes. And all 300 of the residential uses that you're proposing, they're all market rate, right?
Correct.
There is no allocation for other aspects of our arena requirements or anything like that?
Other than an agreement that we've been developing with Councilmember M.D. to facilitate the availability of housing for our armed forces.
And there's seems to be...
Five percent.
Sorry?
Five percent.
15 units.
15 units.
Okay, suppose we like 5%.
Which is 15. And that's been allocated military and Redondo Beach Unified School District?
Correct.
So it's shared between them?
It is.
And it's, is it reserved for those two categories specifically? You will not fill them? They will sit empty until you can, if that ever happened?
It's intended to be the first option. So if they're in the market, they have the first option.
If they're in the market?
Yes.
And is it a particular 15 units? Or is it any of the total?
It's a cross-section of the units. And we're working closely with both entities to determine what the product mix is that is most in demand by the school district or by the armed forces. So if it's one bedrooms, that makes it easier for us to reserve or to make them available first.
Yeah, and you have allowed, you know, certain caveats for, you know, application fees and things like that. Appreciate that, but it is still market rate? There's no special...
Yes, it's market rate.
Okay.
Not only the application fee, but the deposits.
Yeah, okay. So over the past couple of months, there's been two times that we've delayed this meeting that we're all here for tonight. And the reason given was you were doing more outreach, community outreach, but I haven't seen anything on that. Is there, can you enlighten me on that or?
Certainly. I think that you'll discover in the public comment period the results of some of the outreach that we've done. We found it important to sit with our partners in the construction trades to make sure that the jobs were available for highly-trained, highly-skilled labor force here in the construction of the revitalization of the South Bay Galleria.
Okay, very good. You also, it's mentioned that up to 50,000 square feet of office space in lieu of retail.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that.
And potential, there's very cautious words there. So this is not a...
Well, I might expand it for you if you'd like. I'll tell you that on the surface, the office market didn't strike us immediately. And hence, it wasn't included in the initial, in the initial plan. It came to us through outreach, honestly, in Council Districts 1 and 2, where they said, boy, it would be very nice if there was more office space in Redondo Beach. And so we looked at it, we said, okay, fine, let's make provisions for that. So what turned out to be, in the beginning, a realization that we perhaps thought differently early, we've gone a step further and contracted with CBRE... we've gone a step further and contracted with CBRE to do a study for us to see what the office demand is in the market. This is very recent. And to come back and tell us, are there campus users out there? Is there an office demand? Are there people in the market now? Are there people in the market now that will need to expand in the next three years as we develop this program? That's in the works right now. If it's more than fifty thousand dollars, or fifty thousand square feet, I'm not sure that we would be opposed to adding more. That is the number that we had when, at the time that we were ready for this hearing. We commissioned a study to see if there is more, and we would be open to considering more if the market demands it.
But back at its basis, it is still a up to and a potential. It's not a commitment by you to build fifty thousand square feet. It's pending your, the results and the outcome of the study that you're doing. If it says ten thousand, you might do ten thousand. If it says more than fifty, you might.
That's correct. I don't think that any of us want a fifty thousand square foot spec office building that sits empty.
That's empty. Or a retail that sits empty.
Correct.
Which we have quite a bit of.
Correct.
Any hope for what's going on with Nordstroms? The old Nordstroms, I should say.
Yeah, you know, the first hope is to entice Macy's and move Macy's on the, in the old Nordstrom box. I can tell you that the plan certainly is not to allow it to stay empty.
I would hope not, yeah, that plan wouldn't be. Yeah, because in general, what we're seeing, you know, you talk about the death of retail, that isn't really the death of retail, retail is changing. But one of the most difficult ones is the anchor tenants in the big box. They're the ones that are suffering the most. A few years ago, nobody, well, maybe a few people would have predicted that Toys R Us is going away. And that's a big box type of thing. That's a, that could have been a great anchor for, and it was a great anchor for locations around here, but it is going away. So it's the, it's the big box and the anchor tenants that are especially subject to what's happening in our world. They're the ones that are losing the ground the quickest. And I think you're adding the experiential and the smaller venues is a good step of what's going on right now. But maybe your more expertise and you have more expertise in this industry, what's your outlook and hope for truly attracting large retail or big box or anchor tenants that can really serve as the anchor tenants? Because they are critical to the success.
Yeah, you've hit a very sensitive point for us in our industry, for sure. And certainly a threat in our industry is the, are big boxes that are either going out of business or downsizing because it leaves us with real estate that needs to be repurposed. We found several opportunities to repurpose that real estate, and those opportunities also exist at the South Bay Galleria today. The movie theater is an obvious one, although there is the movie theater there today, so take that out. But there's fitness, fitness is a fantastic one. There is, are there other entertainment, interactive entertainment, there's bowling, there's large format restaurants. There is children exercise and activities that need large footprints there. Those are just some of the things that we look at to not just say, okay, let's make the same mistake again and go allocate another two hundred thousand square feet to a retailer that may not make it. Let's divide it up and let's create more interactive and experiential retail that starts to fill out the vision that we have for the South Bay Galleria. It's a place where you can almost do everything, where you can even work out. And then go get a bite to eat, and then go get a movie, and then sit outside and watch your small child have a great time on some interactive art. That's all part of the, all part of the plan.
Okay. The parking, there is some above-ground parking, is that correct? In addition, you're going to add on to the stories of what's in the existing.
Correct.
Parking that is directly west of the theater.
That's correct.
And there's another one or two areas of retail, I don't want to pull out the drawings right now, but, or not a retail, but above-ground parking?
There is one, if you were to go south, just a little bit further south, out in front of Kohl's, there's one there. And then remember, the, what is underneath the entire open space is parking, two levels of parking underneath.
I want to specifically focus on the above-ground. Are you trying to, attempting to make that convertible? Because we have indications, nobody's know for sure in the future, but that parking facilities may not be needed ten years from now, twenty years. I don't know what your outlook timeframe for this is, but a big concrete structure is tough to convert.
Yeah, I would love the opportunity to have that be convertible. I think it's inevitable.
Rather than doing a double helix design, or a helix, you would do a flat with a spiral kind of thing? Has it gotten that far?
I would venture to guess that we would all agree that the parking ratios that we have now would be minimized with the way the technology is going. And the dedication to parking structures that are unnecessary will make the property less enticing. And so you would see us quickly enjoy repurposing a parking garage if the demand allowed it.
Would you do that with underground?
Uh, I don't know. It depends on what the use for the underground would be. And the good thing about underground parking is it's shaded. And it allows you to pop up in different parts of the experience a little bit more purposely. And so nobody likes getting in their car in August and it's one hundred and ten degrees. So in underground parking allows you some relief from that. So with some brainstorming, if we found a great use for it, why not? But I don't see it today.
One of the things we're looking at as a city is in our Riviera Village area, in the south side of Redondo, potentially, it's being explored is to build a parking structure there with a green roof on top of it, a green living space. Is that a possibility for any of your, for your above-ground parking?
We don't have a plan today. We've planned the parking structures to accommodate the number of cars that are necessary and under code. But I applaud the effort in the Riviera. I think that would be a wonderful application.
It is still effort at this point, but it's forward-looking and trying to incorporate that. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I have a question about the green space. Is that going to be fake grass or actual grass?
We have a program at the moment, and Calvin?
Its proposals are official.
Okay, yeah, because I see that as a real problem in terms of green space. I don't really consider that as an ecological way to go. The other thing, you mentioned the green roofs. And I, you know, if you look forward, it's really the way to go, especially for the thermal footprint of the buildings. But also the incorporation of solar on the property. My first commission was the environmental commission of the city. And, you know, we had an environmental task force for the city at one point back quite a few years ago. And this is really a prime opportunity for that. And I, I'm sorry if I missed it, because there's so much volumes of materials, but I didn't see anywhere really an emphasis for things like, bless you, for things like a, you know, solar use of the area, especially these gigantic, I mean, we're in Southern California. And it seems like, it's just like a no-brainer, I mean.
I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner. I think you'll find us with a strong appetite for solar on the rooftops.
Yeah.
I think you might have some insight.
I do. The conversation of green roofs was, was a very important discussion. However, we're using nearly every bit of roof on this project to achieve thirty-seven megawatt hours of solar energy. So green roofs and solar, this project's loaded with solar.
Okay.
To offset greenhouse gas and do a good job of mitigating climate change effects.
All right, okay, that's really important. And this thing about, you know, eventually having less cars and the parking reuse and going with flat parking structures. In Japan and in other countries, all the produce, the supermarkets are in the basement. So something to think about, you know, another twenty years from now.
It makes perfect sense.
But, yeah, so that's very, very doable. You mentioned there was a performance stage, but I don't remember seeing a performance stage.
Oh, no, the open spaces available to be programmed for performances.
Oh, okay, so it's not like a theater, open theater space per se?
It is not.
Just people laying on the grass, kind of a.
Correct.
Or the faux, hopefully not faux grass. You know, especially with the dogs. There's one picture in here with all these dogs, and I think, God, they're peeing on the fake grass. It's going to be a disaster. Yeah, right, no. So anyway, I sure hope all CC a lot more palm trees, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sksenberg.
Yeah, just to follow on with that, that's an interesting mix of having artificial turf and dogs.
Yeah, it's not.
It's a pretty significant health hazard. There is no natural biodegradation of that, and you end up using a lot of water, a lot of effort. You have to keep it clean. People that think that you place artificial turf in a football field, oh, well, use less water. They use more water. They have to keep them clean. They have to wash off all the blood from the game and everything else, so.
Yeah.
More of a drought-intensive.
Perhaps one thing.
Not right now, but a drought-intensive state going forward.
Indeed. Perhaps one thing that'll give us a bit of comfort is that the conceptual drawings that we reviewed today have several checks and balances in them, and they are protected by staff when we come in for a final permit, if you will. And so perhaps you.
I can speak up on the turf issue, is always a big one. State model water-efficient landscape ordinance that we have to abide by limits turf to a maximum twenty percent of the planted areas. There are some types of non-mowing turfs. The key here is durability. And in other retail dining centers, a lot of times the turf gets destroyed quickly by folks. But there are applications that we, if we're commissioned so inclined, we can work to maximize turf and real turf.
As opposed to artificial turf.
And real turf. So that could certainly be a comment the commission would want to incorporate.
Okay. Commissioner Elder.
I brought a list with me, and I figured some of the people in the audience might ask it as well, so I'll just start with some of the questions I had. So on the conditions of approval, one of them, number twelve, was the project shall be pre-wired to incorporate electric vehicle charging stations. But it doesn't say how many, how many parking spots would have that at the locations. Have you got that far in the design phase, or is there any requirement around that?
I would have to defer to staff on that.
I'm waiting for my staff to get back to me on this, but there are different percentages being used in multi-unit projects. The apartments are the biggest opportunity, because those cars are there for a while. And I've seen as many as, five percent is kind of a rule. I mean, electric plug-in hybrids are growing and growing. It could be a ten percent. And if not fully installed and operable, we usually require pre-wiring so that the stalls have a conduit that can have a charging facility there. Pre-wiring is the best way to go, because then you can mix and match how many you need and put in.
That's my greatest concern is the pre-wiring, because going through concrete later is very expensive. And starting out with charging stations all over the place might not make sense because it's growing and they're changing rapidly. But the conduit and the pre-wiring, obviously, is critical, so understanding what percentage there would be helpful. Also, for condition of approval twenty-two, there were a couple of business types in there that I've heard feedback from a lot of people in other parts of the city that weren't always welcome. One of them in particular, because I'm sure a lot of folks from North of Redondo here are massage businesses. I hear endlessly about how unpopular massage businesses are, particularly along Artesia Boulevard. So there's a, as I understand, there's a thousand-foot limit between massage businesses, is that correct? So for this size property, would you really have two at max, or how would that work?
Yeah, I mean, conceivably, you could have two, no more, given the site dimensions.
Perhaps I could add that the application of a massage business for us in this concept and what we've shown you today may be not so obvious, but it would be a day spa or something that was a bit more luxurious than the things that we might see driving up and down certain streets.
Exactly. No, no, that's great, just wanted to understand that. One of the other uses was a recycling collection facility, possibly reverse vending machines or small collection facilities. We've got one of those over by Ralph's between Total Wine and Ralph's. And I hear a lot of complaints from people about it, so I don't know that that's really something appropriate to locate there. Is that something you're pursuing?
No, it's, but there are some civic responsibilities that we feel with cell phones and batteries and certain things that are always sort of cumbersome. And it's just as easy to pitch them in the garbage as it is to go and recycle them, because you just don't know where to take them. And those seem to be a service to the community, rather than collecting cans in the outside parking lot on Saturdays. And so it's meant to be a service to our community as a convenience and nothing else.
Okay, that's perfect, because I hear a lot of complaints from people about people digging through their trash and things like that.
Yeah.
And obviously, it's great that people are recycling, but it's counterproductive if you're digging through someone's recycling bin to get the recycling. And then thrift shops, thrift shops are another one. I hear a lot of complaints about Artesia. I don't know what your thoughts are around.
My thoughts on thrift shops are more the eclectic or the fashion recycle of apparel. And that can be done very tastefully. It's not the inline strip center, dump everything off and hope that they can sell it again for a buck.
Sure, then, I think so. Perfect. And then also churches were one, where I've heard some complaints in the past, because those can be converted to other uses very easily without a lot of oversight. Homeless shelters, methadone clinics, those types of things. Do you have any plans for, it was listed in the condition of approval, but are there plans for church facilities?
None at this time.
And then in terms of revenue that the Galleria contributes, either directly and directly to the city, there's property tax, sales tax, UUT, you fund part of the police program. Are there other types of revenue?
Yeah, I might defer to staff, because there's a, not only is there a schedule of fees, so, you know, to fund parks and other things. And perhaps you have a comprehensive list, rather than me making a fool of myself trying to remember them.
I don't have a complete fiscal impact analysis of the project for you this evening. But in terms of one-time fees, the project has Quimby fees, which will be for park improvement. Those are substantial, twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, times a hundred and fifty units. We have, oh, three hundred units, sorry, different projects in my mind. We have wastewater, stormwater. We have a recreation fee as well as, you know, your standard community benefits of sales tax, sixteen point six seven cents of each property tax, sales tax dollar, property tax dollar goes to the city. One percent of all sales tax dollars to the city. This is certainly a big economic engine for the community.
And then, just as just curiosity, what has been the cost of the EIR process and the design phase and everything to get to this point? Is there any rough number or estimate?
The cynic in me says it's too much, but I'll allow staff to answer it with more.
Well, you know, the initial, the initial EIR fee estimate was, and I should ask our EIR consultant, but we're closing in right on a million dollars for environmental at this point.
And then, as was mentioned, that this has been postponed twice, which means it had to be noticed and then canceled. Does, do you, as the applicant, bear the cost of re-noticing, or does the city bear that cost?
The city bore the cost of re-noticing, which is not a major amount of money.
And Quimby fee was great, that was another question I was leading into. So the connectivity is obviously very important here. The bike path extension from the Edison Right-Away, that's an interesting proposition. Would the Quimby fees be potentially usable for extending the bike to Edison Right-Away improvements, the projects like that?
Absolutely.
I'll come up with more questions for you later, but thank you for your time. Thank you, staff.
A pleasure.
Most of my questions have been answered, but I know we were talking about the incorporation of solar and electronic, or electrical vehicle stations for cars and whatnot. But I'm just checking, and I'm sure I know the answer already, but if you could elaborate, would battery storage be in the mix for your overall energy system of the site?
Yeah, if we, especially if we're using the energy that's generated to offset the use on site. And there are several great applications to do that, whether it's running some of the infrastructure, whether it's helping to run our landscaping, whether it's lighting, whether it's underground parking areas, whether it's parking facilities on the surface or in structures. All those are great opportunities, and to do them effectively without having the power go back on the grid and come back, which doesn't seem efficient, then battery storage is very important in that regard.
Yeah, and another important question, transit. We're talking about this being a huge component for this area, this site in particular. And just wanting to make sure that the rider, whether it be on bus, whether it be on rail at some point, it could be a rider, it could be a walker. I want to make sure that they're not getting lost. And I mean, have you thought through some of that for the everyday person that's, I mean, we're going to see this become more and more of a place where people are getting transportation in and out of here, so.
Yeah, and perhaps not under their own power either, right? So whether it's rail, or whether they're walking, or taking a bike, or taking an Uber or Lyft or something. So whether it's rail, or whether they're walking, or taking a bike, or taking an Uber or Lyft or something, signage is very, very important to us, and it needs to be clear and direct. And it doesn't just exist in directories once you get into the property. It starts on the curb face. And so a curated experience like we are proposing here this evening demands that you make it easy and intuitive the minute that you turn onto the property. And so signage is the first way to do that. And landscaping helps, lighting certainly helps. But signage is a major, major package of, and amenity, actually, for the community.
And with that, I think also you have the ability to, with this, if it were to go to fruition and be done, people commuting to and from downtown, I mean, you already have seven, eight different commuter express buses that go through the beach cities and up to downtown and come back every day. You do have the ability at some point with critical mass to look at doing something like that, too. And wow, that would be probably nice.
Wouldn't it be nice to be able to stop, take a break, go sit outside, have a bite to eat, or enjoy a drink with your friends, and then continue on your journey? And so for that reason alone, we embrace all of those items.
I'm back.
Welcome.
Thank you. So under item 22, you're requesting, under the master conditional use permit, to open up everything on the list. There's 35 items on this list, use classifications, that are conditional use permit items, allowed with a conditional use. Only 15 of the total, of around 50, were originally permitted, and they're relatively benign. And amongst these, we've got bars and cocktail lounges, liquor stores, massage businesses. So with the pessimistic or maybe optimistic, depending on your point of view, we're headed towards potentially a little Amsterdam here. We could save all that airfare. And Artesia is already, the Artesia corridor is already becoming some of an issue with this. That we've got a plethora of these offerings, and now we've got potentially marijuana sales coming, depending on where the city heads with that. Are you willing to give up some of those?
Yeah, I think that we would be willing to define them. You know, I would imagine that those items, and I don't have the benefit of having the list in front of me, but I would imagine that those items have been defined for a long time and perhaps don't reflect the use today. So for example, the earlier example of massage, right? There's fantastic day spas here that have massage that are incorporated into that. The, I think defining those uses would probably be more applicable. But I think it's also important to remember the family nature of what we're proposing. I mean, this is a reflection of a safe environment that all people will come and enjoy of all ages. And some of those are directly opposed to that enjoyment. And so it's not our intent to take advantage of some of those things that you mentioned at all, even though the definition may be dated. And so we would look forward to the opportunity to go through and define them with staff, to make sure that we are delivering what we said, and to make sure that the city has some assurance that it won't go a different direction.
So at this point, are you willing to remove them, and then maybe revisit them later with better definition? Because if we incorporate them tonight as item 22 and it passes through, they're in there. And we have no really ability to come back, other than maybe a gentleman's agreement to redefine them. But are you willing to strike those for now?
No, I'm not willing to strike them for now. I would really like the opportunity to redefine them. I think wholesale striking of them, without me having the benefit of looking at them in front and without taking up precious time of everybody behind me, I think that the ability to go through and work with staff and define them to a use that's consistent with the direction of the general plan and what this commission would like to see would be a fantastic and efficient use of our time.
And just off of that, because the very things you mentioned that you're striving for is the community feel and the family-friendly and so forth, is exactly the things that we're, again, striving for in Artesia that have fallen away.
Yes.
With the incorporation of these things on that whole corridor. And it has become an impediment to that. It's under discussion.
Yeah, it is. It's a healthy discussion, and it's one that is worth having, because it helps us further express what we're trying to do, because it's not that. But I also understand the situation that the city finds themselves in with perhaps a lack of enforcement. And so perhaps staff can help with a solution.
How was the list?
We have simply taken the list of uses subject to conditional use permit and included those in the master permit. I sense the commission, and I in fact agree, it may be good to limit it. I think we would only recommend three or four deletions from here to require those to obtain a separate new, separate end, separate use permit from this larger list. And those would be a combination of defining and clarifying these uses in this table. I can go through them right now. In fact, pretty easy right now. Bars and cocktail lounges? We would probably want to hit a new conditional use permit for that use. But allow restaurants, for example. Restaurants are different than bars and cocktail lounges.
Is this just the standard?
This is the standard list.
This is the laundry list. This opens the floodgates to everything.
For this zone?
Correct. So the commission could consider, and we have a lot of testimony of things. But you could consider excluding bars and cocktail lounges, requiring massage businesses with spa use be allowed. But massage businesses that stand alone require a new conditional use permit. Thrift shops, except vintage thrift shops, which are those aardvarks and cute attractive boutiques, to require a separate conditional use permit. And I don't see anything else on the list that would raise.
Liquor stores?
Yeah, liquor stores as well. Church, church we run into trouble with, because there are certain issues under prohibition of religious uses that we don't want to get into. So I would not touch that one.
So you, but liquor stores also.
Yes, and liquor stores clearly require a separate CUP. So you just take those ones and say that the following uses shall require approval of the planning commission.
Well, for the liquor stores, though, is the intent really that it's supposed to be a liquor store? Like, we see littering too many of our arterial highways, PCH and, you know, Artesia and all the rest of those? Or is the intent, I guess when I saw this, I had the concern, but my immediate thinking was it's not going to be something like that, because odds are the rents are going to be too high to be able to afford that kind of business to be there. Instead, some of the wine shops, and the same thing with the bars and the cocktail lounges, some of the wine shops that you see where, you know, you can come in, you can buy a bottle of wine, it's a wine shop, but you can also do tastings there. I mean, I guess, what is the intent there?
Well, rather than to maybe hear from the applicant right now, we would agree with the commission to pull those out and require a future separate conditional use permit for those types of activities. Because all that means is they come back to you for consideration before they're allowed.
That's fair.
Are gas stations on there somewhere, too? Did I see that somewhere?
No, that's it.
We're not going to need them anymore.
If you put in enough charging stations.
And we take the parking down.
Yeah, I thought they were. Maybe they're not. Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, that you're willing to cooperate with that. And I think staff has led us in a good direction on that.
Then all of the other uses wouldn't require a specific hearing to go before the commission. Most of these other uses are pretty well-known, pretty acceptable. But some of the other ones, we'd like to have the control of individual conditional use permit. Then you can take action on that particular use. It's a little bit more straightforward.
What's currently in place for the, you know, for the current Galleria?
The what Galleria?
What?
Oh, what's there now?
You know, do they have some sort of master conditional use?
They have a variety of different, some businesses do. Some of them aren't there anymore. But we used to have CUPs for the pet shop, for example, making sure that their animals were properly taken care of. I think there was a wine tasting business and activity that you approved. The South Bay Marketplace, Total Wine, has a conditional use permit, it's separate, because they're considered a liquor store. So there's a variety of different use permits out there. So this is not atypical of what the commission does.
Okay, so I, so does this particular condition then allows them not to go, come to the planning commission for these particular uses? Whereas in the current environment with the, in the Galleria, they would.
That's correct. That's correct. So what we're doing, since this property is going to be revitalized, much as we do on any center that's just being developed, is, to the extent possible, grant an approval so that they can go out and lease this space. And because there's a big lease-up time, but they'll say that the following uses are permitted. The following would require you to go to the city to obtain a CUP separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Megan. First of all, thank you for just all the great work. It's quite tremendous, also, working with the residents. I have a couple more questions. The 5% for the military and the school, how did that number, that came from the city, the number of the 5%? Or is that something that, where did that number come from?
I'd have to defer to Jeff Mailman. It's what we offered.
Okay, because one thing I do want to mention is that I remember when we looked at our housing plan some time ago, we have a very high amount of aerospace, military-type employees, especially with Northrop being the largest business in Redondo, and Boeing, and aerospace, et cetera, in the area. And it would be nice to revisit that number to be higher, to really encourage not only, you know, teachers, but also people who work in those industries, because this South Bay is really high. And I think if there's anything we can do to help our military is, you know, to live and not have to commute would be a great thing. So that was my first comment on the second round. On the hotel parking, it seemed like you had like four little spaces, which I'm assuming is for valeting the cars. And is that really going to be enough, or is that, you know, somebody has a little wedding there, reception, and then all the cars arrive at, you know, 1:00? And, you know, if you have five valets to move all these cars, I'm not sure how that's going to.
Certainly won't be enough for.
It seems like a real little bottleneck there.
It's intended for quick access. But remember, and it's difficult to depict in this plan, remember, there's two levels of parking below it. And so there's access straight up from underneath.
Okay, so the valet can just run back and just, okay.
Or valet. Valet is accommodated right out in front of the hotel as well.
Yeah, no, I assumed that, but it was just so few parking spots there for, you know, a fairly large hotel. Okay, the third comment I wanted to make was, I was actually very surprised, I must admit, that the residences have ended up on the Hawthorne. I cannot think of anything more horrible as a resident. Instead of being residents with the existing residents for our future residents, I would think that our, and obviously, this was not the case, and I was completely wrong, but I would think that our residents would want to have residents next to them, rather than commercial and parking, and who knows who's coming by? Because there's something about ownership and pride of ownership and taking care of your things. And it was a great opportunity when it was on Kingsdale, because you have the ocean breeze, you're next to residential, residential, you're closer to the bus station, and now you're on Hawthorne Boulevard. I remember a student living at Cloverfield and the 10th Freeway, it was two blocks away. And I couldn't understand why there was this constant black sticky dust everywhere. And then somebody eventually told me, oh, it's because of the freeway. So those people living on Hawthorne Boulevard will never be able to open their windows. First of all, because of the noise, the traffic, the pollution, and the sticky. So it's a shame that it couldn't be put on, just after voices, because I think that when we look at these big projects, we think, we need to think about things like airflow and dynamics of things like this. And, you know, it could have been put along the, it doesn't have a name, the little road that goes on the south side.
177th Street, yeah.
Seventy.
177th, yes.
Yeah, you know, if it would flip the other way, that I think would have been, but it's really quite an assault for having those residences. And when you go down Hawthorne Boulevard, I don't remember seeing very many residences on Hawthorne Boulevard, per se. So anyway, I just want to express that as a commissioner. And I know it is, you know, the people have spoken on that. But we really have to look at the quality of life of our future residents. These are the people that we will embrace in our arms as new people in our city. And that's going to be one of the problems. And it's going to impact quite a few people compared to the number of people living on the, on the, on those. So I just wanted to voice that. And the last thing I might have here for the moment is the, there's a push in terms of the number of residential units. And that is that, you know, the local city residents only want, don't want residents at all, or. But then we have also regional pressures. The state wants us to have more units. And I was wondering, how has that been, the dialogue between the state requirements, which we, as a city, have to meet? And I think that it's a very serious thing that for all that we are against development and more apartments, we are expanding as a population. There is no buts about it. Just get used to it. Because, I mean, I was teaching environmental science, and I remember, oh, yeah, you know, we're going to have 5 billion people. And now, you know, look, we're having 10 billion people. So it's growing, and we're living in Southern California. And as anybody knows who's trying to buy property here, it's getting harder and harder. So how do we stand with that state requirement and this huge development opportunity? Because we can't blow it.
I'll hear from Sean.
The resolution currently has a finding as to meeting the city's arena allocation, which is what I believe you're discussing right now. And the city's.
You know, but not state. I think there's a difference.
Well, that's part of the statewide requirements. That is the amount that's allocated from the state down to the region, down to the city. And the city's current 2017 housing element, consider the Galleria site ranging from 298 units up to 650 units. And the city was able to meet its arena allocation with as few as 298.
Okay, all right. All right, very good.
So with regards to the bar, this is to staff, bars and lounges, would that include the hotel? Because, you know, if you're trying to attract a high, you know, high-level hotel, you're not going to want them to have to go get a conditional use permit just because they're going to have a bar area.
The hotel typically has a type 52, which is a bona fide eating place license for food service and bar service. And my suggested amendment would be that bars and lounges, except in conjunction with restaurants and hotels, would be the way I would recommend you phrase this.
Thank you. That's a great observation. Thank you.
Commissioner Glenn.
So going back to the whole residential issue, and I was equally surprised to see it actually moved on to the Hawthorne side as opposed to Kingsdale. And my guess is that was the reason that the residents were wanting that change was because the decrease in the building heights and whatnot, and the fact that you now have this 30 or 40-foot wide green space. Is that right?
Thirty, correct.
So I still have the concerns about the residences on Hawthorne, exactly, because of the traffic and all the rest of that. But the question I have in particular is, the entry and exit for the parking for the residences is also on Hawthorne. I don't know if you've driven up and down Hawthorne.
Many times.
But I feel for the people that are trying to pull out of their resident driveway on Hawthorne, onto the traffic that's on Hawthorne, without causing multiple accidents, given the speeds of the traffic. Has anything been considered in terms of addressing that so that we don't face that problem?
I can speak to that, or the applicant. But there is a resident entrance/exit on 177th, which is internal to the site.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, the movement of the residential away from Kingsdale to Hawthorne actually resulted in a couple of benefits. It was discovered that the views of the LA basin are much greater and substantial. From the front of the property, you can see PV, Hollywood, downtown, all around. Being towards the back of the property, you don't have some of those views. And it's very, very easy to design for the acoustical condition. The building actually wraps around a center that's a space for the residents to enjoy. So, it's kind of like the marine hotels on the freeway. Once you're inside, you don't know that, know it's there.
Commissioner Strasburg?
I'm going to hold for now, thank you.
Okay.
So, I was just going to point out quickly, condition of approval three is, has to deal with the applicant will not offer less than 5% of the market rate residential units, so that is specifically something in there. And then I've got a lot of other stuff, but I think, depending on what people's mood are, we might want to open up public comments, since a lot of folks have showed up tonight to give their input as well, before we ask further questions and gather feedback.
Do we have a motion to open the public feedback?
Do we need a motion, or can we just?
You already opened it.
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
So, yeah. Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll take this time now to open this hearing for public participation. Okay? This is how many we have, so I'm going to just kind of reemphasize some of the rules of the road here. When you come up, three minutes, please, and we've got a timer there. When you see it turn yellow, think about concluding your remarks. I'll just take them in the order that I have them here. We really do want to hear, you know, new points of view, new evidence you may have. If it's, if someone's already made the statement, we'd like to kind of avoid repetition, just to kind of keep things moving. And if there are groups that have a common concern, you know, consider having a spokesman provide that testimony, so. Come up, please state your name and city, you know, for the record, and then, and then we'll start the time. The first speaker will be Bruce Seles, and Bob Pinsler is on deck.
Good evening, Commissioners Bruce Seles, Torrance. I'm for a lot of this project. And what I'm really for is 100 units of housing. What I'm really for is seeing the commercial slash retail reduced by a third, and that third being spread into a couple of different ways. One, a dedicated area on this, on the map for the Green Line Station. Two, a dedicated area for young people to gather, whether it be a skateboard park, whether it be public aquatic center, whether it be some other form. I lived in District Four for 20 years. There are no tennis courts in District Four. There are, there is very little park space. This is needed, and if you're putting the burden of this very, very large project, and no one's, you know, you're not kidding anybody, this is a huge project, where if this project was down in, let's say, District One or District Two, we would, it would, it would vibrate in here with outcry. So, what I'm asking for is, and I've asked Mr. Melman this from day one, I guess he listened, but he didn't act on his, on my request. There has to be something more than just a small splash pad for kids. District Four is park poor. There's not a lot of places. Perry Park is so well-used, there needs to be another place for them. And this is the opportunity to do it. Whether you have to take the Quimby fees and direct those into the, into the, into this project for the youth, or you have to take away the public art, but the financing needs to be rearranged, so that something is done for the, for the youth in District Four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Pinsler, Redondo Beach. As you probably know, I represented District Four for eight years. The Galleria's success was a central part of my focus, and to some extent, still remains a primary economic engine of the city. But as with all things commercial, disruptive technology has had a way to change one's plans. The Galleria is in that period right now. As your commission name implies, your charter is to plan. Planning includes, as a major aspect, looking into the future, and making sure that present land use decisions fit how a world will be, not how to fight the last war. The last war is over, disruptive technology has won. Now, it is time for city planners to accept this, and require those desiring to build in our community to think into the future. The people at Forest City, prior to the QIC acquisition, listened to resident concerns and made modifications to the seriously flawed original plan. It was a much better offering, but even with those changes, it is not the solution that Redondo Beach needs. One of the key issues is residential versus office. Those favoring residential say in part, that this will be an element of the solution to California's housing crisis. This proposal will not do that. California's problem is that it doesn't have enough affordable housing. If the commission wishes to specify that all units offered will be affordable, then perhaps it will be legitimate to say it is part of the solution. But I don't think you're going to do it, nor would the developer accept it. Along with the dearth of housing, there's a lack of quality office space in Redondo Beach. While perhaps the Los Angeles Times might not have found what it needed here, many startup and other fast-growing tech companies might. Additional office space will likely reduce the number of people who are now commuting out of the city to their jobs. Maybe not by a lot, but it could be enough to help mitigate some of the traffic issues that this present proposal flagrantly does not deal with. The city of Redondo Beach has long suffered from a vision problem. One need only look at the waterfront. The Redondo, but Redondo's problem is more than just vision, it's a greed problem. Bigger is not necessarily better. If some alleged revenue is left on the table for the benefit of the quality of life of our residents, then so be it. 25 years from now, the Galleria, in its new proposed form, will likely be competing in a very different world. You have to look beyond the plans and make a decision for the city of 2023, 2033, and 2043. If this was a bare piece of ground, is this the kind of mall we would be building? We have the possibility of creative planning, rather than squabbling over an antique. One of my former advertising clients, Apple, made a strong statement about this. Think different. This city will be rewarded for it. And by the way, regarding the renderings that are on the project, are those Lilliputians? Is this marbles in the soup? Or using a tiny fork to make chunks look bigger?
Thank you.
You need, you need to include a scale. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to, just for the audience, to refrain from clapping, things like that, just keep with proper decorum. It'd be much appreciated. See, we have a timer problem, so?
Yeah, we're having a light problem.
Okay. So, when you hear it, the beep, that's, okay. We have Arlene Pinsler, and then Lana Lehman-City-Londale on deck.
Good evening, Chairman Ung, and members of the planning commission. I am Arlene Pinsler, 38-year homeowner in Redondo Beach in District Four, just about, oh, I don't know, maybe seven minutes from here by car. I'm here tonight to say that I think this project, as currently proposed, is far too dense, and it really didn't have to be this way. Many residents who reviewed the draft DIR and renderings for what we envisioned would be a renovation and renewal of the flagging South Bay Galleria, expressed strong concern over the developer's intention to repurpose a portion of the mall.